Good evening. Today is December 12th, 2024, and the time is now 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those you hear, person watching, and those watching online at home. I'm going to ask Student Director Maryam Bradite, if you will please lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. Is there any discussion of the matter? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We will now open the truth and taxation hearing portion of the meeting. The purpose of the truth and taxation hearing is to present the following information: the current year budget and actual revenue and expenses for the prior year, the proposed property tax levy, the percentage of change over the prior year, specific purposes and reasons for which taxes are being increased, and to allow for public comments. Public comments are, according to Board Policy Procedure 207 Public Hearings, it's required to have signed up prior to the start of the meeting, and my understanding is we have no speakers signed up. So after we go through the presentation, we will then continue with the rest of the meeting. So I will now call forward Stacy Sovine, Executive Director of Administrative Services, and Matthew Hammer, Senior Municipal Advisor from Ellers. Come forward to the budget and property tax presentation. Thank you.
Good evening Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Tonight, we are bringing to you our truth and taxation presentation as outlined by Chair Miller. I am going to turn it over immediately to Matthew Hammer, our representative from Ellers, who addresses our financial municipal advisor from Ellers. So I'm going to turn it over to you right away.
Thanks Stacy. Good evening Chair Miller, members of the board, Dr. Battle, Matthew Hammer from Ellers, District's Financial Advisor. We're here to fulfill the requirement that all municipalities are required to do on an annual basis with the district's truth and taxation hearing. And we'll talk about several pieces as part of the levy, a little bit about the state budget. But I think the tagline here, right, as a whole, if we, the takeaway is, is taxes are going down for district property owners, which is the important piece, and we'll outline some of the reasons why as part of this process. So districts and municipalities are required to hold these hearings. As was outlined, you're required to talk about the current year budget, and then as well as the changes as part of the levy as compared to taxes payable 24. School districts, or the state constitution outlines that the legislature is responsible for making sure we have provisions in taxation or otherwise to provide for an equitable and thorough, efficient, and public system for education throughout the state. What that means is school funding is highly regulated, right? So there's state formulas that are set, those are driven by enrollment. We'll talk a little bit about how that plays into the district's overall levy this year. Tax policy is set for local schools, and then those authorizations have maximum authorities, and those are set by the legislature. We'll talk a little bit here, the district, or the statewide funding, as everybody knows, was increased in the general education formula by four and two percent. Those increases are built into the district's overall budget as we look at the fiscal '24 budget. I think when we look on trend, this chart gives you a little sense of what's happened over the last two decades. And I think anybody, if they go to the grocery store to purchase groceries, knows that inflation is something that is playing into all of our lives at this point in time, and it's playing into the school districts' lives as well. So if we look at that, those increases that the districts received over the last two years, inflation over that period of time has been a little bit over seven percent in '22, '23, and then now forecasted at six percent, and then dropping back down to three. So you can see that gap in the formula. So the bottom bar here represents what that formula increase has been over the last two decades. The top bar represents what the state general education formula, which drives most of school districts' funding, would have done over that period of time if it just would have kept up inflation. And I think the important piece on this chart is that that gap continues to spread. So school districts are continuing to see pressures in funding statewide. The other piece that is important, there has been some improvement, as has been noted, in the special education funding for school districts, which is playing a role for school districts. But this, these programs still are mandated by law, right, to be provided by schools. And there still is funding that has to be put forth through district's general fund budgets, which is known in the cross subsidy, right, or the amount of money that is required to provide those services that isn't funded. That amount was around $712 million in fiscal '22. It was about $755 million in '23, and it's still projected to be, even with the funding increases, over $400 million when we get to FY '27. So that's going to be an ongoing pressure that school districts continue to deal with across the state as we look forward to future budgets. District's budgets are broken out into several funds. They're listed here. This is an outline of the district's overall budget. The district's overall fiscal '25 budget was just a little bit north of $180 million for revenue, $184 million for expenditures. Those are broken out into the different categories here when we look at the overall funding for '25. So the general fund makes up about eighty-six percent of the district's overall budget, and then there's other funds with the food service fund, community service fund, the district's outstanding debt, OPEB trust, and the OPREB debt service fund. The district's general fund budget, to no surprise, most of the district's funding comes through the general education, or general education aid, which means most of the district's funding comes through state aid, right? About sixty-eight percent of the overall budget is coming through state aid. About 3.6% comes through the federal government. And then an important portion is the local levy, which is about 28% of the district's overall budget. When we look at expenditures, it's no surprise when you look at this chart, school districts are people, or in the people business, I call it, right? So a significant portion of the district's overall budget, about three-quarters of it, goes towards staffing and benefits. Districts also provide contracted services for those positions that maybe they're filling in other ways, right? And transportation plays a key role in that, and the purchase services arena as well. But when you look at it from a program perspective, I think it's always important to note a significant portion is going towards programming and directly impacting students. So this gives you that breakdown. And there's a number of different areas here as you look, regular instruction, forty-one percent. And you just kind of go left, vocational, special ed, instructional, pupil support services. Those are all areas of the budget that directly impact students. So when we look at an overall levy on every year, just because you have a change in levy doesn't mean it impacts the district's overall budget. We always like to point that out because there's many formulas in the forty-page, size-four font levy report that the school districts get every year that are driven with a local levy share and a state aid share, right? And those, the state aid share has been diminishing as property valuations have been going down, and that local share has been increasing. The expenditure budgets also play a key role, and then districts can also voter approve levies. And the district has had the support of the voters here in this last legislature, or this last November, which is important for the district. And that levy has a delayed implementation, so the first new authority will start actually with next pay year. When we look at a school budget, it differs from other municipalities. Now, other cities and counties are setting their budgets right now, and they'll collect the taxes, right? So they're setting them in a calendar year basis. Our school districts across the state are setting their budgets. Right now, these levies will be for revenue in fiscal '26, '25, '26. So starting with next July, those revenues will start to become available. That's important because many of the formulas are estimates at this point in time, right? So the districts, those formulas are driven by enrollment. The district's estimating those enrollments, what they anticipate FY '26 enrollment will be, and then their subsequent adjustments as part of the levy process. And we'll highlight somehow some of that's impacting the levy this year. The tax statement, everybody receives, would have received their truth and taxation statement sometime in November. They're required to be in property owners' mailboxes in November. You'll see several categories on that statement. I always like to point out that school districts are the lucky ones that get two, right? We get two lines. Other municipalities only get one, and those are broken out into those two categories. But it's important for property owners to know, when they look at their overall statement, to look at all the lines on there, because there are several jurisdictions that are taxing you on your property tax statement, and the school district only makes up a portion of it. School districts are limited in their authority. So those formulas are driven at the state level, and then they also, school districts can present questions to voters for some additional revenue. And Burnsville has both. But as we look at the overall process, it really starts with step one, with the county assessor providing a value for each property owner that is identified on your statement. That happens early on each year when folks get their valuation notices in March. The legislature sets all the formulas, the county auditor uses all those assessed values to calculate the tax values or the tax base for the district. The department then takes that information and provides that forty-page, size-four font report to the school districts with what their levy limitations are. And then the school board then takes that and adopts and certifies those levies as part of this annual process. After tonight, when the levy is approved, those levies then will be sent to the county auditor, and the county auditor will actually spread those taxes with final tax rates next March. So we're at the process right now of the hearing. You can see the Department of Education is required to provide the district with their levy limitations every September at the beginning. By September 8th, school board adopted their levy with the certification to the maximum at September 26. And then we're now, the statements have been out, and we're at the hearing portion. And then the district will take action on the levy later on in the meeting. So now to the taxes, right? So the overall tax levy is estimated, or is down 4.4%, or about 2.2 million for taxes paid from, compared to taxes payable '24. This is the breakdown of that overall levy, breaking it down into all the different categories. We're going to touch on a few of the key areas that are getting impacted. And I will point out, the district's estimates for enrollment are down a little bit compared to taxes payable '24, right? So that's driving a number of these levy changes that we're seeing. So when we look specifically at the voter-approved operating referendum, the district's overall revenue, or enrollment compared to '24 is down in size. So the district's operating referendum is estimated to be down by about $560,000 compared to taxes payable '24. When we look at the capital project levy, that voter-approved capital project levy, so this levy was renewed, this is actually the final year of the levy currently. The new authority will start with next tax year. But that is a tax rate approved by voters, and your tax, district's tax base grew a little bit, and it's based on your prior year's tax base, so that levy is up about $338,000. The long-term facilities maintenance levy, districts are authorized to submit state-approved projects on an annual basis. And those levies are, the school district works on coordinating those with other levies as we look at all the district's overall levy as a whole, and that levy is up about 2.3. And when we look at the prior year, this is a kind of a dynamic that we're seeing statewide right now, is prior year adjustments are down. And as I said at the beginning, districts levy, right now we're setting the levy for estimates for fiscal '26 or '25, '26. Last year's levy was actually creating adjustments because, for fiscal '22 and '24. Those adjustments were much larger than we were accustomed to seeing across the state because of the inflationary adjustments that happen to district's operating referendums across the state. So not only was the district's enrollment estimated to be higher last year, there was also adjustments that were happening at the state level when the state was recalculating the formulas that caused the adjustments to be a little higher in taxes payable '24 compared to '25. So the overall adjustment we're seeing is about a $4.5 million adjustment as those adjustments are flowing through, and adjustments this year are less. The other adjustment we'll see is a reduction in the district's overall debt service levy, and that's really being driven as the district looks at, or as the state recalculates the necessary funds for debt service payments. There's an increase to that overall levy of about $532,000 as they look at the required amounts, districts are required to levy 105% each year. So when we look at impacts every year, levies change for a number of reasons. And the most important thing for a property owner to look at is what their market value is doing on their tax statement. Because everybody's market value will change a little bit different as the county assesses value. There could be improvements you've made, your value in your area based on sales could be changing. But overall, if your market value is changing a little bit larger than the average of the overall district, you're going to pick up a little larger slice of the pie, or a little bit less, depending on how your market, how your market value is trending to the district average. This illustrates that contextually, right? So if we just had two property owners paying taxes, and you had, and the levy was $500,000 in total, each property owner would contribute $250,000 towards that tax, right? But if we look at that same dynamic in the subsequent year, if one property went up 10% and one property went up 25%, the blue property would actually contribute more to the overall levy because their property actually makes up a larger share of the tax base. And this is a simple way of looking at it, but it's a dynamic that goes on every year for property owners in the district. There is also a state law change that we want to point out for residential property owners. There was an improvement to the homestead exclusion, which specifically is impacting residential homeowners if your value is under $517,000. That program was improved, or that credit program was improved by the legislature with the legislative session of '23. Historically, that number topped out at $434,000, and they've made some improvements so there's some additional credit relief for property owners if your property is valued less than $517,000, starting with taxes payable '25. When we look at the district's overall levy, this is a trend that gives you the trend. I'm going to dive into this analysis that looks at how things have progressed over the last four years. In this accounts for no change in value to start, and it really illustrates that tax rates have been coming down since '23. So if you had a $250,000 home and it didn't change in value from '23 to '25, it would be down by about $100 in total on a $250,000 residential home. And you can kind of see the same trend on the 350. You can see that this is looking at a commercial property at about $2 million, and an apartment at $750. And then as we look at that cumulative change, I think this is kind of an interesting illustration as you look at it. We aren't showing, the tax base is pretty flat between '24 and '25, so there's not a lot of change in the overall district tax base. But if we look back, the tax base grew quite a bit between '22, '23, and '23, '24. So if we look at an 18.7% cumulative change over that time, these are the taxes that you would see if your property would have trended about on average, about the overall, how the overall district's referendum market value changed. So taxes are down, and they're down about $80. If you had a $250,000 home, that would have, would have been valued about the same for '24. We always like to point out these tax refund and deferral programs, just because they're underutilized programs. The Department of Revenue tells us all the time, there's forms that have to be filled out by August each year. But you can, if you want more information, if you're a taxpayer, a property owner, go out to the Department of Revenue, and these programs are available to research or talk to your accountant. That is what we have for the presentation, so it doesn't sound like we have anybody that signed up for public comment. So there won't be any public comment, but we can answer any questions that the board may have.
Yeah, any clarification questions requested? Thank you very much, Mr. Hammer.
Yes, thank you. Happy to be back.
This concludes the truth and taxation hearing. We will now move forward to the information section of our meeting. Up first on our agenda, we will be receiving an attendance pilot report from Amy Petrowski, Director of Students Support Services, and Morgan McDowell, Teacher on Special Assignment. Welcome.
Good evening, Director Miller, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. Morgan and I are here this evening to provide you an update of the attendance pilot program in which Burnsville is currently participating in. This initiative is a collaborative effort between Burnsville and 11 other school districts across Minnesota in partnership with the Student Attendance and Truancy Legislative Study Group. The purpose of the partnership is to share valuable data and insights with relevant legislative committees to develop recommendations aimed at increasing student attendance and reducing truancy across the state. This pilot program is designed as a three-year initiative to address these challenges comprehensively. Our vision is to create a multi-pronged approach to create a system that proactively decreases the amount of chronically absenteeism within our system. Research consistently demonstrates that collaboration among families, schools, and communities has a significant positive impact on student attendance, academic achievement, and attitudes toward learning. These efforts ultimately contribute to the increased graduation rates. Our focus areas include elevating staff to build strong trusting relationships with students and families that center around academic success, empowering families by providing tools, resources, and the confidence to actively participate in and support their child's learning journey, welcoming and engagement environments to foster responsive learning environments where all students and families feel valued and included, and partnering with community. This means collaborating with our community organizations, such as our counties, to enhance literacy and provide responsive culturally-relevant instruction. To achieve these goals, the following resources and strategies are critical: attendance intervention roadmap, to coordinate and facilitate a detailed action plan for our multi-pronged attendance strategy; a systematic engagement to deploy proactive systematic resources to address attendance challenges and support interventions; and training and development to develop and implement training programs for site leaders, support staff, social workers, counselors, and teachers to equip them with the tools and supporting attendance and engagement. We recognize that students may face a variety of barriers leading to chronic absenteeism. Our proactive approach emphasizes building authentic relationships with families and students to ensure they feel welcomed, supported, and valued within our school communities. By addressing these barriers collaboratively, we aim to create an inclusive environment that promotes consistent attendance and student success.
Absenteeism is a national challenge. Research shows that chronic absenteeism impacts all students. Not only are chronically absent students experiencing interrupted instruction, but the instructional pace of the classroom is impacted when teachers have a shifting set of students in their classroom. If they slow down to catch up the students who are absent the prior day, they lose the attention of the students who are there. Consistent attendance helps students develop personally, socially, academically, and emotionally. It helps students build relationships and form critical connections. We're working towards a systemic approach to address chronic absenteeism in 191. We believe improvement is possible. We are working to better understand our challenge in order to organize our response and align resources. The triangle graphic demonstrates the importance of a multi-tiered system to support attendance. Many of our attendance efforts are focused on problem-solving rather than prevention. Our system was built on reactive responses based on county systems. District and school teams with actionable data are crucial to improvement. Prevention provides a supportive response to absenteeism. Research shows that punitive practices don't improve attendance. Effective practices in prevention include increasing school connectedness, enhancing family engagement, implementing messaging campaigns, and sending nudge communication. Strong relationships in school are fundamentally important to student success. School connectedness is the closest thing to universal prevention. The 2022 Minnesota Student Survey reports that 90% of 191 elementary students agree that they develop trusting relationships with adults at school. 68% of 191 middle school students agree, and 73% of 191 high school students. The nudge theory mentioned previously is an approach used in behavioral sciences that involves unobtrusive interventions to promote desired behaviors. Research demonstrates that both students and parents tend to underestimate how many days of school a student has missed and how their attendance compares to peers.
Chronic absenteeism includes excused absences, unexcused absences, and suspensions. Missing instructional time negatively impacts the student learning and overall academic outcomes. Our district's attendance rates indicate that 68% of our students are attending consistently, while 32% fall within the category of chronic absenteeism ranging from mild to severe. In general, research shows that many parents perceive two to four absences per month as normal or average. However, this rate translates to chronic absenteeism impacting student learning and long-term academic success.
Improving attendance requires an all-hands-on-deck approach. We're collaborating with the 11 other pilot districts. We're learning from the Legislative Study Group and offering input based on our experiences in 191. We're partnering with Scott and Dakota County as they continue to enhance their preventative support for our families. As mentioned previously, we need to bolster our tier-one prevention, which includes messaging, education, and utilizing our new family platform, ParentSquare. We met with clerical staff to better understand current practices and work towards consistency. Support staff are engaging in database decision-making, triangulating attendance data with behavior incidents, and our social-emotional learning screener. It is also a priority to engage with students and families to better understand our current reality and barriers. It is essential to understand root causes in order to organize our response and align resources. The database decision-making wheel shows our current process. A newly formed district attendance team and MTSS committees are diving into current performance and performance analysis. We are reviewing and discussing various data points. We are disaggregating our chronic absenteeism data with various considerations such as grade, school, ethnicity, disability, EL status, open enrollment, and walk zone. We're listening to staff to gain insight from their perspective, practices, and recommendations. The district attendance team completed a district self-assessment around the six areas of actionable data, positive engagement, strategic partnerships, adequate and equitable resources, shared responsibility, and capacity building. The team completed the assessment on a scale of strength to urgent gap. The pilot sites of Edward Neal Elementary, Eagle Ridge Middle School, and Burnsville High School completed a school self-assessment. Our pilot sites span- Our pilot sites span grade levels and represent both Scott and Dakota County. All of these data points are informing our process. Our next steps include hearing from our students, families, and community. We value their experiences and perspectives. We're partnering with school pilot sites to develop a comprehensive plan based on the six components mentioned previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have any comments or questions?
Go ahead.
So I was just curious, as part of the pilot program, does that allow for FTEs that were, were we added to like, allow for like, some of the teams that were formed? Or, you know, is there, is that part of the funding that we got like additional staffing in order to focus on this? What the, you know, the stuff that you're talking about as far as forming these? I think it was, can you go back a couple of slides? Right there.
Right there.
The, the focus team, or I mean, I guess the teams that you have that are digging into this data, are those current staff or those, you know, I mean, because if they're taking away time from what they're doing, I mean, is this something they were already doing? This isn't something they're already doing, correct? It's like, how is that being, you know, accounted for? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think what you're asking is if any other staff or any other positions were created for this pilot program in the pilot buildings? And the answer to that is no. We decided to take a look at our system and work smarter and not harder, and really lean into our social workers and our counselors and our staff, our, our building administrators to really look into what is going on in our buildings and to really talk to our families. And so there isn't additional staffing that we felt was needed for this. We believe that this takes, this involves everybody, all teachers, staff, everyone to come in. It isn't one person's single job to make sure that our students feel valued and our families feel valued.
Okay. And then additionally, how does the in-school truancy fit into this program? Like, how does that differ, how are you differentiating between like the students that are just at home, missing school, and then the ones that are actually like going in the bathroom and not going to their class?
Well.
High school, I guess specifically.
And the high school is working on that. I do believe that the high school understands what they're, what they have. And, you know, our principal, Sanaval, has got some systems that he has set up in place for some of those things. But missed time is missed time. And so if you're in the bathroom, you're absent, you're missing that period. And so that all gets calculated into those chronic. And, you know, just our data that we have been looking at, you know, school just started. And so we're just kind of beginning to pull that data and kind of take a look. You know, you're not chronically absent until you miss a certain amount of days. But we've already seen an uptick in attendance, at least at these, the pilot buildings, because of the systems and things that they put into place. So our, you know, the truancy or the skipping of classes, that has really gone down according to information reports that we've been getting from Jesus.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Miller? Can I add to the response? Yes, Chair Miller, Director Word, and then members of the board. Yesterday, I visited with one of the ninth-grade academy teams. Wednesdays are their data, deep data dives, DDD, days. And they shared with me, the attendance of ninth graders has dramatically improved from last year. It has also resulted in more ninth graders earning credit. So you heard from the presentation of the students about the caring community. The teachers yesterday also added that what they've done with tardy sweeps and the electronic pass through securely has helped. So they had one student, they came together and was getting a pass out of every class. And so they came together with support from social workers. And the student, boy, all of you know what I've been doing. So getting a pass for 10 or 15 minutes. And also, the second factor they attributed to better attendance and better engagement with the learning was the cell phones are put away during instruction. And then I stayed for a tardy sweep. And maybe five ninth graders, maybe about 40, 11th and 12th graders. So it's working, and they go in the bathrooms to sweep, so they can't hide in the bathrooms. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments, Director Marsal?
So I have a question about the data, the current reality slide that has the pie chart. So is this data coming from since the school started? And do we have any baseline data that, that went before that to like compare what our improvements are? I mean, I know we've, it's been said that there has been improvements, but do we have like any data that goes back?
This data, this data was collected from the beginning of the school year right up until probably right before the fall break that we had. And so this is what we presented to the legislators. I want to say it was like December 2nd or 3rd, whatever that day was that came in. And so this data is what was collected from then, from that time. And so this is right now just our baseline, this is what we have for this year. It's kind of like mostly, like the first quarter data.
Chair Miller, add on, Director Marsal, and members of the board. Amina refreshed my memory when the accountability changed. Was it last year was the first year to the 90% attendance? So we could go back to last year. The state accountability system, the federal definition changed. Yeah, so we could go back and show you that. And especially after we learned from our pilot sites and they start to put in some strategies to actually see that trend.
Okay, so I just asked that because my next kind of follow-up question is the pilot sites and how they've been chosen. You know, like, did we use that prior year data to say, okay, these are the sites that may mostly benefit from this pilot? And then going forward, do we have an opportunity to add like more sites if we need to?
The sites were chosen because we wanted at least one elementary, one middle school, and of course, the high school was involved with it because they were already partnering with Dakota County. And so we know that at Edward Neal, we have a very passionate social worker that has some really good strategies already in place, and so we are kind of honing in on that one. And then Eagle Ridge was chosen as a middle school because we've only got two middle schools to choose from, but also Eagle Ridge is located in Scott County, and we're also wanting to partner with Scott County since we've got two elementaries and a middle school in Scott County. So just kind of, one of the things that we have learned through the legislation and things, you know, sometimes school districts, the policies that they have in place for attendance kind of depends upon what the county's process is. And so because we're unique and we are involved in two different counties, so some of the things that Scott County does and what Dakota County does are not, they're not the same things. And so it was good that we chose one also, well, at least one from each county. And then we wanted an elementary, middle school, and high school.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair Miller. To dovetail on Director Marsal's question, so the actual attendance rates at the pilot sites was not considered?
Not for the pilot schools.
Not for the pilot schools, okay. Another question. Oh, so going back to the slide that outlined the staff focus groups, do you know approximately how many staff are included in those focus groups that are actively involved in the pilot?
It was a one-time focus group where we went in and asked questions. I would say there was approximately 12 social workers, 12 cultural liaisons, 20 clerical staff.
Okay, thank you. And mentioning partnering with the community, and I know you mentioned both counties, are those the only two entities with whom we're partnering, or are there others that might be involved?
Well, right now, those are the ones that we have reached out to and have been holding meetings with. And so currently, those are only two that we're working with right now.
And are the other pilot schools, are they taking a similar approach, simply focusing on the, working with the county?
I don't think so, not, well, when we're working with the county, I mean, there's certain things that we are in guidelines within our policy that, of course, we're working, but those are, a lot of that is a lot of reactive. And so what our pilot schools are doing is really working into more of those proactive strategies. And so bringing families in, having conversations, finding out what those barriers are for student attendance, and then providing them the resources and access to break down those barriers to get them into school. And so that's kind of the learning process that we're also doing and really focusing on the systems that we have within our own school community.
And I guess that was kind of what I was getting at, that like attendance is more than, it's more than just the counties, and we know that we have partners already that we're working with that might be able to help with that. So I imagine indirectly, that's kind of involved already.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair Miller, Director Alt. The group has also leaned into research from a national group. I'm forgetting the name of the national group.
We've, we've looked into about two or three different kinds of national groups to take a look at attendance and help us gather more information. Each entity or each group kind of has a different angle on it. And so just kind of doing our research that way as well, but nothing has been decided.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a few here then. So let's return to the current reality slide for a minute. I would like to just, we talked a little bit about it, I want to clarify what we're looking at here. So absence is defined as an excused absence, an unexcused, or suspension, correct, first of all? And this data is, apologies if you mentioned, is this district-wide, the three sites?
Eight through 12.
District-wide, is what we're looking at, okay. And then it was alluded to earlier, you mentioned that missing a hour of class is somehow credited in here versus, this is not just students being out for the day, right? This is somehow you're taking credit for, accrediting for a fact a student missed one of their six classes of the day, right?
Yes, it pulls in, it pulls in everything, and it attaches it to the student. So if the student is skipping like three or four classes a day, it's going to be marked as a half-absent attendance. We also, like in our elementaries, attendance isn't taken by period. So it's more on a half-day for attendance for, you know, if they're there for a portion of that, you know, the morning, then they are there for like an excused tardy for a portion of that day as well. So each level kind of takes attendance a little bit differently.
So it's, it's calculated by the assumption that if all children were in the classroom, the given amount of time they're supposed to be there, that is the maximum amount, and then you take away from that and you divide into the percentage, okay? So I just point, in theory, if I, if my student, I remove my student for a half a day to go to a doctor's appointment, which is excused, but would be counted, they're, you're equally weighting that essentially in this data with a student that went and hid in the bathroom for half a day. All right. I mean, it is a little bit concerning that we're showing we have over 30% chronic, some form of chronic absenteeism, per your definition here in the, I guess in the district, that's significantly high. Okay. And I guess the only other, the comment I would make in that before I move on to my next questions is, I have fed this back to the system some, on multiple occasions. I think we have a fair amount of issues with our reporting and our capturing of, you know, when students are absent and why they're absent. And I've had personal circumstances with my children when they were excused, and then I was, got a phone call from the automated system saying they weren't in class and et cetera. And so I would encourage us to continue to ratchet down and figure that out because whatever efforts you're attempting to do are going to be, you know, given problems with that because you're not operating with the actual data, so. So if I understand the, sort of paraphrase, the intent here is, we're one of, you said 11 districts in the state? We're receiving some funds, correct, through this? And we're in a partnership with the U and the Legislative Group, maybe not the U, maybe I made that up. All right, the Legislative Group, sorry. So, but they are obviously giving us the funds because they want the feedback on the data we provide them, right? And how, but I didn't hear that, they're not requiring us to try certain things per se, right? They basically just said, this is best practice, is what we're aware of, now go figure out a way to come up with your own solution to that and give us back the data as you, as you work through it, right? So, okay.
Well, I think that one of their goals is to kind of create more consistency across the state and all of the different, the disparate districts as well. So we're looking for, I know that they're looking for some more consistency with coding, you know, expectations around excused tardies or excused absences or anything like that. So they're just right now in the stage of getting information from each of the 11 or 12 school districts. The school districts are, are spread out through all kinds of small communities. They're, they're filled with small communities, suburban and urban school districts. So they're, they're gathering some really good information for some of those pieces to kind of make those recommendations moving forward. But they are looking to, whatever their recommendation is, is to become more consistent. But like I had said, I mean, the consistency, you know, one of the reasons that we are so inconsistent across the state is because each county is also inconsistent across the state. So, you know, they're looking at partnering with county people as well to bring some of that clarity in so that we can really, you know, take this on.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
I'm sorry. Just caused one more question to come to mind. I'm sorry. You're almost done. So if I'm a student and I miss half of a class, how is that recorded?
It's recorded inconsistently across the different buildings, right? So it kind of depends upon who's coding that and what they're coding it for. And that is, and it depends upon also if they get the reason why the student is absent. So a lot of times, if a parent calls in and we get it, but they don't tell us the reason why, we just know that they're excused, right? So we don't always know the why behind that. But it just, it just kind of depends upon.
But the why shouldn't matter based on your previous statement?
The why does kind of matter so that we can kind of begin to learn patterns so that we can dig deeper into those barriers that we're talking about. So the why does matter. It doesn't matter if it's excused or unexcused, like that why doesn't matter. But when, it, it, it just is.
Two separate things. There's the, there's the excused versus unexcused why versus the more social side of things. So inconsistent, and that's obviously something that we need to tighten up.
And we learned that when we were bringing in the staff groups too. It was, it was interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clarify, Chair Miller, the federal definition of chronic absenteeism does not make a distinction between excused and unexcused. You are not in front of your instructor. So even if a parent calls in, it will still count against us. They make no distinction.
I just had one other question. So with the other pilot districts, are they also looking at it from a preventive point of view too versus the reactive?
Yes, I would say there are. There's a variety of different interventions and practices in how they're using their funds. And some districts are using the second chance bus and picking up kids. Some are implementing a 6:00 AM health line for families to call. So there's just a variety of innovative practices that there's a lot of learning together of what people are finding is effective.
All right, thank you for your report this evening. The next item on the agenda is to receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, and Stacy Sovine, Executive Director of Administrative Services, about the fiscal year 2026 preliminary budget.
Yes, thank you, Chair Miller, Directors of the Board, Stacy Sovine. And I will give you a preliminary look at what we're thinking for budget development for fiscal year 26 already, a few weeks away from 2025. I do believe as a district, we're in a strong financial I do believe as a district, we're in a strong financial position, but as you look at the state budget and what's on the horizon, we must continue with our strategic, um, budget planning and prioritizing. Just to give you a little bit about the state forecast, there was a November forecast, uh, six hundred and sixteen million at the end of the fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven biennium, which is one point one billion less than the prior estimates. So looking at inflation, as you heard earlier from Matthew, um, from Ellers, this surplus would grow to one point five billion. So I share that analogy because I think, uh, there will be similarities as school districts, including ours, will be facing. They are also seeing the spending in, um, E-12 education, there are two main factors. And you heard earlier from Matthew, special education costs are expected to rise. It's interesting also the inflation on the basic formula. So Stacy will go into details about the expected, um, revenue we will have. We are expecting a slight enrollment decline. So it's very fortunate that you had that levy presentation before this to give you some context. We'll also share, our timeline will be, um, similar to last year's timeline for our budget processes steps. It will be a little behind because the legislative session does not start until January fifteenth. So I'm thinking we'll be pretty much the same, um, at your January operational meeting when you set your calendar. I'll have more of a timeline of when we will bring that final budget. I really like to wait to see what the governor's budget proposes, and then what the legislative body proposes before we really start, um, to crunch those numbers. And so I'll have a timeline for you, probably sometime in January with more definite dates. We will still open up the survey to our community, we'll have a public, uh, budget meeting. We'll expect our principals as well as our, uh, directors here to meet with their direct reports and share information and get impact, and well as principals to get impact from staff as well as parents. So tonight, we're not going to present a timeline. I want to see what happens at the Capitol. They have a few things, um, they are doing really good. They've identified the co-chairs, they will have equal representation of both parties on all the committees. So they're ready to get to work. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stacy Sovine.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Battle. Again, this year will be fairly similar to what we've done in the past. We do have a guiding change document in which we will follow. We identify in the guiding change document what our current reality is, uh, what the unacceptable means, and what our desired results will be once we are complete. Just a couple of things that are noted within here. The inflationary increase that the legislation, legislators passed in the last, um, funding term was between two percent with a maximum of three percent, uh, with a built-in inflationary increase. We are anticipating that that number is going to come in around two and a half percent. That doesn't mean that the legislation and the governor can't propose additional money on top of the inflationary amount. Going forward, at this point in time, we are not counting on any new money. We're just going to go with the inflationary increase on the general formula, okay? We did, and we are very grateful to our community for helping us pass our tech levy, operating budget, our levy in November. That will extend out, as Matthew indicated, starting after next year for another ten years beyond that. So that'll take us into the mid-two thousand thirties. Also, we are in the midst of a current operating levy, uh, so we are about five years out before we have to renew that. I say, um, really that that's flexible. Five years minimum, up to fifteen years before we may need to take that out to taxpayers. The, the board does have the authority to renew that for ten years. And our operating levy is already at the maximum amount with the built-in inflationary increase. So again, our community has been most generous in supporting our district. So, uh, the desired outcomes, I'll just kind of skip to that part, that we do align all of our budgeting to the strategic roadmap initiatives. It's designed to retain and recruit students. We have competitive class sizes and programs for our students, that it is structurally sustainable, uh, over time. Maintains a budget that follows, uh, the, the board fund balance, and that fund balance, uh, minimum is eight percent. We are, we are safely above eight percent, you'll be glad to know. That we continue to maximize our cross-departmental collaboration, that transfer, uh, that our budget is transparent in the process in which we go about. Again, we do seek input from both staff and our community members on the process. And as always, by state law, you are required to approve a budget by the end of, or no later than June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. So just a few things, um, we already mentioned that we are looking at about two and a half percent increase. So that will elevate to about seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars per student. Our student count for October one is down about fifty-three students from last year. So this October one count compared to last year is only down fifty-three students, which is pretty good, uh, pretty modest for us. The trend actually, as we are at right now, um, our enrollment continues to increase and is outpacing our enrollment from last year. So year over year, looking at the dates, we are slowly actually adding students, which is good. Based upon the decrease shift, just if we were to look at our October one count, we're, that would be a decrease of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, okay? Uh, our English learners, the cross-subsidy for that, uh, between FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six, that revenue will remain flat. And we are up about a hundred and thirteen students from last year, uh, in that area. Special education revenue, uh, we're anticipating about a five and a half million dollar increase in that area. And we are up again about thirty-nine students from where we were last year. Compensatory, um, we get about fifteen million dollars from the state for compensatory, but the FY twenty-six amount has not been released yet from the Department of Education. That is a big unknown for us. That number can, we don't expect it to remain flat, we do actually expect a decrease from that, we just don't know how much at this point in time. A and I, uh, Achievement and Integration Funding, we expect a small decrease of around sixty-two thousand. And Title One Funding, at this point in time, we expect to remain flat around three million. We have gained additional seats for VPK, up to about three hundred and ninety seats available that we are using to fill. Overall, as far as state and federal funding at this point in time, feel pretty comfortable with, I don't want to jinx us, but it, kind of, kind of flat there, is where we're looking. Again, also our projected enrollment for next year would be about seven thousand students. That's about the same number that we had for FY twenty-five, is what we are anticipating. Just based upon what our trend line is, we're hoping that that will maintain. Again, the referendum, uh, the local levy, you will, um, hopefully be approving that a little bit later tonight. The tech, uh, capital project levy, again, we mentioned that, there's a small increase in that. As far as the, the, the percentage remains the same, but the tax base has increased, so therefore there's a, a small increase of the amount of money that we'll be generating there. Again, one ninety-one specific, um, we've identified a multi-year, uh, investments for our pre-K-12 pathways programming, um, and will continue to focus on that. Also, a comprehensive achievement in civic readiness and achievement in integration plan and equity plan will be a part of our budget going forward for FY twenty-six. Eighty percent of all costs are salaries and benefits. We do expect, uh, single-digit increases in cost for transportation, food supplies, and utilities. Transportation, while it's single-digit, it's going to probably be, be a little bit on the high single digits.
That's tied to the inflation, the transportation, cost of living.
We, we, we have an inflationary, they also have an inflationary component built into their contract with us, which again was around two point four percent. But, and then we have a built-in increase year, and are yearly, over the next three years, I believe, that also is there, so it's the inflation on top of the, 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 the flat amount, and I believe that there is a small amount also in there for gas. If the gas comes out, that'll be good for us. And enrollment considerations with smaller kindergarten classes coming in will also impact our overall, um, revenue with that. Again, going back to the, the, the guiding change document, the really, the driving question is, given one ninety-one strategic roadmap requires that the district optimize resources for student learning, how will the budget for FY twenty-six continue to support our mission and priorities? Position the budget to leverage every funding source available while aligning with the goals of advancing equitable student outcomes in the district's strategic directions? As we, that's the question, and the things that we do are the how, to, and the, as to answer that question. Again, we want to be good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars, we do try to demonstrate that daily by being selective in the things that we move into and being prudent with the things that we step away from. It's a little bit of both. We want to align our budget to the strategic plan initiatives and equity goals. We comply with all statutory uses of funds. We include our constituents and their perspectives throughout the process, we're transparent. We continue cross-departmental collaboration, and we will continue to submit a structurally sustainable and effective budget to you. Finally, we do have a, a budget summary, uh, the board has become familiar with this, uh, appearance year over year. One of the things I want to point out is we had an adopted budget for twenty-four, twenty-five where we were going to try to target sixteen point four one percent as our unassigned fund balance, okay? So that, that is the budget that you approved in June of two thousand twenty-four. The column to the right of that, what that does is it takes our audit results for FY twenty-four, and instead of our starting amount being forty-four million, our starting amount now reflects the audited results, which is just under fifty-four million. So it, you will receive a revised budget, um, in January, which will reflect, uh, to date, our actual staffing vacancies, our expenses to date, and, um, the actual costs of the employees that we are employing at this point in time. So that number will be tweaked even a little bit more so, um, and refined a little bit more. But at this point in time, uh, we're, we're looking at, well, roughly twenty-one percent as an unassigned fund balance, so. Which is a little bit down from the actual results for twenty-four, but it is higher than what we were budgeting for, for FY twenty-five.
Another piece of the process, um, I have asked staff to submit abstracts, if they have increases or new programming. For example, you know, this year was the first year we offered a parent series, so Aaron Walsh, as well as the Wetterling Foundation, uh, part of that was paid for by grant, so that's one abstract I have received, is to continue that. So I will be bringing, as always, if there are any new expenditures. Otherwise, we're hoping to roll over budgets and add the inflationary increases, as you heard, with utilities and contracts, based on what we think the state will give us. Just a note for the public, we are required to adopt our budget by June thirtieth. As you know, the session typically ends in May, but if they go over, we still have to approve our budget. So it's very complex, the Minnesota system, and the numbers do change, so thank you Stacy for sharing that. We have an adopted budget in June, uh, then we get our audit results, and then we come back in, in January with some more numbers. With that concludes our report.
Okay, do board members have any comments or questions at this time? Seeing none? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Of course, I have questions. So with the enrollment target for FY twenty-six, what's that number?
Seven thousand and twenty-one?
Seven thousand, it, because I saw two, I saw seven thousand, seven thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, it's kind of bouncing seven thousand eleven to seven thousand twenty-one. Part of this, we, we kind of estimated a number a little bit earlier than what we usually do. So it's going to be right a little above seven thousand.
Okay, so I guess my ask would be, when we come back in January, that we have that enrollment target as part of the budget, so that we're clear about what the enrollment is, that we're looking at.
Again, it's a projection, and we will, we will have a, a more defined number as we move forward, yeah.
In January.
Yeah, we, we presented some of this information today to the principals and the directors so that they could see preliminary numbers of what we're looking at for each of the sites and grade levels, and then also sought their input on a Google document to where they started putting in some of their, um, requests, initial requests, and then they'll follow those up with abstracts so that we have a more defined reason why we might bring those forward in our budget.
Right, and that I understand, and I guess the thing with enrollment is, um, I remember a time when we actually did get an enrollment target in December. So, because of course, our funds, the revenue comes from the number of students that we have. And I think that helps keep us within a certain parameter, understanding that there are going to be other asks, and, um, you know, this money went away, and so now the district has to look at, are we going to keep it? Does it make sense? Is it something that we need to add to the budget? Unacceptable means on the guiding change document, just a note, we want that changed from world's best workforce to, um, comprehensive achievement in civic readiness.
Oh, I missed that one.
I didn't, I didn't catch it beforehand.
Yeah, you mentioned, you said the new term, Stacy.
Yeah.
Comprehensive achievement in civic readiness, but in this one, we still kept the world. The world's best workforce, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Changed it the other place. And didn't change it there, okay, thanks.
And then I guess the other piece that's kind of floating around in all of this is, um, back in October, we had talked about committing funds from the proceeds of the land sale. And, um, before we get too far into the budget process, I would like to ask that that, you know, that we act in a timely manner. In terms of this board, you know, staff was going to bring forward the language for committing funds, and I would expect that we should be able to get that done, at least for the Diamond Head Outlets, because, um, you know, we have that revenue already in, in the pot. We need to deal with that in January. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Then, thank you for your report. Next, we will receive a report from Maryam Brad, a student board representative, welcome, Maryam.
Thank you. So I wanted to start off December's report with some updates from our student affinity groups. To start, the Asian Student Association, last Wednesday, held a celebratory and educational meeting about the Hmong New Year. Here, they ate Nob Vom, played a Kahoot, and gave general information about the Hmong New Year and the culture surrounding it. Also, the Black Student Union has been doing some exciting things, like sharing information about the club at our lunches and making it known that new members are still welcome. An exciting event coming up for this club is their hosting of a community potluck next week on December the nineteenth. The Indigenous Student Council also held a cultural showcase for Native American heritage late last month. This showcase included dancing, cultural dress, and music hosted in the Maraz Center at Burnsville High School. The peak of this night, night, was arguably the round dance performance that the audience was encouraged to join in on. Also, Black Girl Magic had last Monday hosted a panel discussion with African-American female entrepreneurs to speak with members of the club. Speakers talked about their journeys to get where they are now, including highlights and hardships of making moves like running their own businesses and the reward of cultivating a craft that they love. Also, for Burnsville Strong, it, they are hosting a snowflake medallion hunt in the weeks leading up to winter break. The hunt involves fifty hidden snowflakes throughout the campus. hunt involves 50 hidden snowflakes throughout the campus, and once the snowflakes are found, they'll be decorated with positive messages and used to create a positivity collage to display at the high school. Also, very exciting news for our Theater Guild. We received feedback from evaluators at the Hennepin Arts Spotlight Program noting that Burnsville received an outstanding achievement in musical theater for their fall performance of Mean Girls and have been invited to perform a short medley in the Spotlight Showcase at the Minneapolis State Theater in June. Based on the amount of honors in total and the number of outstanding honors, this is the highest honors show we've had in the past four years. Also, this past Tuesday, the Theater Guild held a Chipotle fundraising night, where you could go to Chipotle, mention that you were there to support the Guild, and then 25 percent of the proceeds would go back to the school guild, which is a great segue into youth and government, which is also having a Chipotle night, similar fundraiser on January the 7th. So you can just go and say, I'm here for youth and government, and then proceeds will go back to our delegation in their upcoming conference, which is also in January at the state Capitol. The last thing I wanted to quickly mention is something that I got to see firsthand, which was our high school's involvement in Burnsville's annual tree lighting ceremony two weeks ago. On November 27, the Burnsville Freestyle Choir and the Burnsville Swing Team performed at the heart of the city tree lighting ceremony, showcasing their singing and dancing talent to classical songs and to a very packed and excited crowd. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Miller and members of the board. Tonight, I want to talk a little about some really important work we're doing and the amazing stories that are coming from it. As members of this board are aware, schools across Minnesota, including our district, face two big challenges when it comes to teaching staff. First, there is simply a shortage of teachers, and second, that our teaching staff does not reflect our student and family demographics. One of the most important ways we're meeting these challenges is through our Grow Your Own efforts. With the help of state grants and the work of our amazing staff, we're supporting both of our students and current staff members who want to earn their teaching licenses. This fall, we welcomed several new teachers who are either 191 graduates or current staff previously were in unlicensed positions. This includes Maria Gutierrez-Beltran, Amber Christman, and Lisa Ruder, who had each held educational assistant positions in the districts previously, but also took unique paths to becoming teachers here in 191. We also welcomed seven Burnsville High School graduates to our teaching ranks this fall, including one Connor Hume, who is following a family tradition. We have stories about both groups of new teachers on our website. I encourage everyone to take time to read them and hear how each graduate and staff member was supported in their journey and why they chose to come back or to stay in 191. But I want to share one comment from Burnsville High School graduate Amina Mohammed, who is now a first-grade teacher at Sky Oaks. Talking about her experience as a student and now staff member in 191, she said, "I've always felt so welcomed. I couldn't imagine teaching at a place other than District 191. We're as diverse and as different as our community. We're all different, but we are still one big family." I hope this makes your heart full. It makes my heart full. And once again, I share it often. I am the very proud superintendent and so proud of our students, staff, and families and the community we continue to build here in 191. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Okay. Do board members have any other reports they wish to share? Please note that committee and school reports are next on our agenda. We have both items on tonight's agenda due to this being our only meeting in December, so we will keep these board meeting reports open to anything not related to committee work, appointments, committee work, appointments, or school assignments. So we'll start with the non-committee reports.
Yes. At this time, we would like to take a moment to recognize our outgoing board members who are leaving us at the end of December, Director Tony Connor and Chair Eric Miller. We have a token of appreciation for you both that I would like to present to you. Tony? On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. That will fall off. Just be careful. Can you give that to her?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
It's very loud.
Yes. Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you for your service. We're sorry to see you go, but we appreciate all that you've done and given to our community.
Thank you very much.
And we wish you well in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Yes, I suppose. Want us to hold our bells or no?
Hold our bells, yeah.
That's very nice. Thank you. I think my one of my first meetings, I don't know how that would work. I remember that very early. I've been waiting for that bell the whole time.
The rubber is decided not to run again.
That's right. Okay. Any other committee reports to share this evening? Yes, Director Alt, please.
Not committee, but.
No, I'm sorry. Any other standard reports. What are you going to call them? Yes.
So this afternoon, Dr. Battle and I had the pleasure of attending a celebration of Mayor Janet Williams in Savage for her 17 years of service as mayor of of Savage. And it was just really wonderful to hear all of her accomplishments. Former county supervisors, former county supervisor, Mayor Kautz, and the current city administrator all spoke. And she just clearly has made a very positive mark on the city of Savage through her dedication to libraries and the community. And I know in our schools, we always have appreciated her partnership and leadership in connecting Savage with 191. So wishing her well, celebrating her retirement, I'm sure she's going to have a lot of wonderful time with her with her family and doing other fun things, and also welcoming in the new mayor. And I know that the partnership will remain strong even after the transition.
Excellent. Any others? All right. Then we'll move to receive reports about board committee appointments and school assignments. So I'll just run through the list. We'll start with legislative. Director Chester.
Yes. The Legislative Committee met in November. We discussed the the drafts or newly adopted AMSD and MSBA legislative platforms, reviewed what was in our current platform, and we cumulatively agreed upon some things that we're going to put in a draft that will be discussed later in our work session.
Okay. Thank you. Policy review, Marisol.
Yes. We also met in November, November 19, and we reviewed a number of policies that are going to be in this meeting for us to take a look at later tonight. And the next meeting is going to be next week on Tuesday, December 17.
Excellent. Thank you. Negotiations, Director Alt.
I have nothing to report.
And then we'll move to other board committees. Any, I'll just open up for anybody to have any of their report.
Intermediate District 917 met Tuesday, in which we, because they cannot seek levy support, so they don't have a truth and taxation hearing, we did, though, have a review of their school audit and voted to approve their very clean audit.
Any others? Yes, Director Connor, go ahead.
And forget AMSD, my favorite. Okay, so we had our AMSD meeting, December 6. They just did updates of the legislative proposals that they want to discuss in 2025 from the AS AMSD consultants. And this included funding for schools, school safety, funding for special education. And then they just want to encourage you all and us, everyone, to to talk to your local legislators and invite them for coffee, and also schedule a meeting with them at the state Capitol. Bring your ideas on budget use for schools. And to make it easier for you, they've updated their website to make it easy to navigate and advocate for these appointments that you can make online to visit your legislators. And then they had speakers, superintendents from different districts, Eden Prairie and, oh, well, actually, I'm sorry, there were three different superintendents, but they're from Eden Prairie schools. And they just wanted to describe their work to modernize change and accountability to our students with community input. And so mainly, they're working to change these standardized tests, the MCA and ACT tests, and because they don't think that they accurately measure currently the needs for our student growth in high school. The MCA and ACT tests are not teaching values, they feel, that are essential to knowledge skills for students. And then they showed examples of some of the questions on the tests, and they were surprisingly, like, had nothing to do with anything. And a lot of us would have went, hmm? So it's like, if we're saying that as adults that have been through college, they were thinking, what are these high school students thinking? So they do, their goal is to inspire each student about education. They want to meet the students' personal education goals over the next 10 years. And so they're gathering information and ideas from students and the community on what these assignments for high school assessments, I'm sorry, assessments for high school and post-grad readiness should look like. They want these goals to be inclusive to all Minnesota schools, not just the district, just our district or their district. And they feel that this input will promote student growth and confidence in their education instead of leaving them, leaving the high school students feeling disgusted with test results that are not really showing their strengths. They make, they they want to make these tests standardized tests that really assess and make sense for the experience of students. And then there is a link, if you have ideas that you want to input for goals in this proposal on the AMSD website. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any others? All right. Thanks for all your reports. We now will move to the business portion of the board meeting, starting with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Alt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Chair Miller, I just have, we didn't do school assignments. I thought that was going to be part of what.
Certainly, we can, we can, let me just, we'll do that one side.
Okay.
The motion in hand carries unanimously. We certainly can back up for a second. I have my apologies. Yes, school reports, go right ahead.
Okay, so I, my school for this year was Eagle Ridge, so I had a tour of Eagle Ridge on November 26, led by Principal Helke. Principal Helke gave me a very thorough tour of of the school. The changes I noticed since I was an avid tutor there before I was on the school board was their security at the entrance. They have very strong-looking security doors, and the entrance is not accessible to anyone, to, you know, to people that shouldn't be coming into the school. So that's one big thing I noticed. The school also seemed a lot calmer. The changing of classes and the time in the halls since I was there just seemed to be calmer. The communications, oh, let me, I'm sorry, let me go back. The communal areas that they used to have in Eagle Ridge are now more separated and walled off. Principal Helke seems to have a really good rapport with the students and staff. He introduced me to many as we passed through the tour. He gave, he gave a couple of students a chance to air their opinions with the school board staff, which was me. The only complaint one of the students mentioned to me was that the free lunches did not include enough food. Okay, and then last, oh wait, no. I learned that Eagle Ridge has a full-time social worker and and from Washburn to help their students and families and staff with resources. I wasn't aware of that, so that's good, because I know a lot of schools share. And kids do weekly media skits during their homeroom. I met with some of the Grow Your Own student teachers there. I was very inspired by that. There were at least four or five of teachers, and then they also were teaching Lead the Way, Project Lead the Way. Our pathways from education to middle school and to high school is really working, Principal Helke said. And he can bear witness to this because he previously worked in the high school. He also sees his program is very important to student readiness. The things that Eagle Ridge would like to see more of is more electives with for choir, industrial arts design, band, orchestra, and cooking, and teachers to teach these electives. They're very important, he feels, to introduce at that level, the middle school level, to feed into the high the high school pathways. And that concludes my report. Oh, I do want to just say that Principal Helke seems to just be a natural at this school. He seemed to be born for this job. He's very good with the students, and I was very impressed with him and his student rapport. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. The first item under new business is to appoint one of our board members to serve as the representative to Intermediate School District 917. Director Leslie Chester has been serving as our current representative, and I move that she continue in this role. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Is there any discussion on the matter?
Just just that Leslie's been doing an awesome job as the rep. I really appreciate your reports and the updates, so thank you.
Thanks.
Second that. All right. I will just note that the term goes through 2027 as part of the 917's three-year term rotation. Since Director Chester's current school board term ends in 2026, unless she chooses to run again, the recommendation from District 917 is for the board to move forward with a standard appointment, and if a need arises, a new representative can be appointed at a later date. So all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay, and that motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is to approve the final certification of the property tax levy payable in 2025, presented by Stacy Sova, an executive director of administrative services. Welcome back.
Thank you, Chair Miller. As presented earlier through our truth and taxation presentation, the information is following as it was reported earlier. It is my recommendation that the Board of Education certify the final property tax levy for taxes payable in 2025 of $48,815,256.78 as presented. The final levy recommended for approval this evening is in the amount, as I stated, it is the maximum level levy authority, and it reflects a 4.3% 36% decrease from the payable 2024 property tax levy. The certified levy funds the fiscal year of 2025, 2026. And again, I do recommend approval of the final levy for taxes payable in 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the final certification of property tax level pay levy payable in 2025?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Seconded.
Seconded by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The motion carries unanimously. Up next, we're being asked to approve on a first reading basis, changes to 413, harassment and violence, 709, student transportation safety, and 806, emergency operations. Stacy Sovin, the Executive Director of Administrative Services, will be presenting this recommendation.
Again, pretty much everything that you stated. We did bring the, those policies before the Policy Review Committee in November 19th, 2024. For, uh, policy 413, just a legislative update as far as defining familial, sorry, familial status. Anything over three syllables I struggle with, I apologize. Policy 709, legislative update also included in the policy which adds like electric bicycle provision. And policy 806, which also has legislative update, has pretty minor language adjustments in the removal of section five, which was optional from the MSBA to have included in there. We just felt that that provided confusion, so we removed that.
Is there a motion to approve the policies just presented?
So moved.
Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis, changes to policy 202, school board officers. Presenting the recommendation this evening will be Superintendent Dr. Teresa Battle.
Thank you, Chair Miller, members of the board. This policy 202 was also reviewed by the Policy Review Committee on November 19th. Changes are based on the Minnesota School Boards reviewing updated language to more closely align with the state statute language around the board's annual organizational meeting in January. You will see under section three, organization, strike through second Thursday in January, change to first Monday in January. And then an additional sentence, the ISD 191 School Board holds this meeting on the first Thursday following the first Monday in January. And also under legal references, the statute, Minnesota statute 123B.09, boards of independent school district. So it's my recommendation that the board approve on this first reading basis, changes to policy 202, school board officers.
Is there a motion to approve policy 202?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Our final policy for consideration this evening is to approve on a first reading basis, changes to policy 610, field trips. Presenting the recommendation tonight will be Assistant Superintendent Dr. Chris Belmont. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Miller, members of the board, Superintendent Battle. Policy 610, field trips, was discussed and moved forward at our November 19th Policy Review Committee meeting. Most of the changes are cosmetic in nature, reorganization and trying to better clarify the intent of our policy and match it to our regulations. Some, some minor shifts with some of the policy references that are aligned to the Minnesota School Board Association recommendations. Back to you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve policy 610? Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Marissa. Is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
In our final item under new business, we are being asked to adopt a resolution to accept donations. Presenting this resolution will be Superintendent Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Miller, members of the board. Before I present the formal resolution, I want to say thank you to the many community organizations and partners that support education and ISD 191. I am grateful for your support and generosity. Included in this quarter's donation report, you will find many ways our community partners support 191. We have an outpouring of support for Brain Power in a Backpack program from many individual community members, as well as local business and organizations such as Carmouche America, Minnesota Valley Electric, Presbyterian Church of the Apostles, Cargill Salt, Prior Lake Savage Optimist Club, Burnsville Rotary, Shepherd of the Valley Lutheran Church, and the Mercan Corporation. And we continue to have investment in our schools and students' school supply needs with donations from Hosanna Church, Veris Mortgage Capital, and the Kopp Family Foundation. We also receive generous donations to Joseph Nicolet Middle School from family and friends of a special education educational assistant who recently passed away. Finally, we want to thank all of those community members who donated to the Burnsville Senior Center Annual Giving Program. Therefore, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the resolution to approve and accept these donations to our district in accordance with our school board policy and Minnesota statutes and to permit their use as designated by the donors.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to accept donations as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Is there any discussion? Having been moved and seconded, this resolution will require a roll call vote. So in just a second, I will ask Sarah to call the roll. And when she calls your name, please respond with either an aye, if you are in favor of the resolution, or nay if you are opposed. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Alt?
Aye.
Director Marissa?
Aye.
Director Werbe?
Aye.
Chair Miller?
Aye.
Director Chester?
Aye.
Director Hume?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution was declared duly pa- I don't think she can vote if she wasn't present for the, yeah, so it's fine. It's not a problem. This resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. This concludes new business. Up next on our agenda is a work session to discuss ISD 191 legislative priorities. Before starting that work session, I will move that we take a brief recess and return to the dais, sorry. We'll return to the dais at eight fifteen to begin our work session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. I am moved by myself and seconded by Director Hume. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously.